Mike five, Mike five.
Clerks Mike.
Mike six, Mike six.
Mike twelve.
Sound good.
Mike eight.
Staff PC.
Staff PC number two.
Wireless Mike, I mean I'm sorry, podium Mike.
I heard you say it so I just repeated it.
You guys sound good, Zoom audio check.
Thank you Tess.
Thank you.
Mike five, Mike five.
Clerk's Mike.
Mike six, Mike six.
Mike twelve.
Sound good.
Mike eight. Mike eleven.
Staff PC.
Staff PC number two.
Wireless Mike, I mean, I'm sorry, podium Mike.
I heard you say it, so I just repeated it.
You guys sound good. Zoom audio check.
Thank you Tess.
The.
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 All right.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am happy to reconvene the Monterey County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Could we please have a roll call? Afternoon, let the record reflect all supervisors, including Supervisor Phillips, were present for closed session during the lunch hour. And for open session, let the record reflect all supervisors are present with the exception of Supervisor Phillips, who is absent, and Supervisor Adams and Askew are appearing in person, with Supervisors Alejo and Lopez appearing via video conference. Thank you. And our first item on the agenda for today for the Monterey County Board of Supervisors is item number forty, and that is the Collins Public Hearing. And I believe that we have Fiona Jensen, who is going to be making a presentation for us today.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon Chair Adams and members of the board. There we go. My name is Fiona Jensen. I'm the project planner for Collins, HCD Planning File Number PLN one three zero three three nine. The project is located at eighty-three Mount Devon Road Carmel and is within the Carmel Area Land Use Plan. On March eighth, twenty twenty-two, the board adopted a motion of intent to deny a rezone of the Collins property from Resource Conservation Coastal Zone to Watershed and Scenic Conservation, forty acres per unit, Design Control Overlay, Special Treatment Coastal Zone. The Board of Supervisors referenced the following facts and findings with respect to the rezone. The proposed rezone would weaken the protection of views, slopes, and biology at the subject site. The purpose of the resource conservation zoning is to provide a district to protect, preserve, enhance, and restore sensitive resource areas in the County of Monterey. The entire property is within the public view shed when viewed from Point Lobos and parts of Highway One, and contains slopes exceeding thirty percent. As a result, the rezone is inconsistent with the Behavioral Science Institute Development standards. The property also contains environmentally sensitive habitat areas, and therefore the reasonably foreseeable development resulting from the proposed rezone, one main residential unit, has the potential to impact such sensitive resources. Allowing such development would be inconsistent with the Carmel Area Land Use Plan. Although the conservation easement was terminated, the Resource Conservation Zoning District is consistent with the original intent of the easement and is consistent with the requirement of properties designated forest and upland habitat. The applicant knew or should have known restrictions applicable to the property at the time it was purchased on February eighth, nineteen ninety-four. The applicant retains economically viable uses of the subject property in that the existing zoning, resource conservation, allows for uses including but not limited to resource-dependent education and scientific research facilities and low-intensity day use recreational uses. These allowed uses may be considered under separate permitting and under separate discretionary review. Therefore, staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors find that the project is statutorily exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to section two one zero eight zero B five of the Public Resources Code and section fifteen two seven zero A of the SEQA Guidelines, and deny the request to amend the local coastal program to rezone a twenty-one acre parcel located at eighty-three Mount Devon Road Carmel from Resource Conservation Coastal Zone to Watershed and Scenic Conservation, forty acres per unit, Design Control, Special Treatment Coastal Zone. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you very much. We will start with the board. Is there any member of the board who wishes to ask any questions or make any comments at this point? I'm not seeing any hands raised. Okay. Thank you. Is there any member of the public who wishes to make any comment or ask any questions at this point? So please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Gwen DiAmro, and I would just like to thank all of you here today for doing an outstanding job through the years, for the staffs, your aides, everyone who's been so involved in this matter, and I would just continue to urge you to take staff's recommendation to deny the rezone request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiAmro. Is there any other member of the public who wishes to make comment before we bring it back to the board for a vote? Seeing none, I just want to thank my colleagues who supported this resolution to deny the rezoning request. As noted in the staff report, the property has a number of constraints that make it incompatible with the requested zoning, among other reasons for denying the application. And it would be my pleasure to make a motion to deny the request to amend the Monterey County Local Coastal Program to rezone this twenty-one acre property.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you Supervisor Alejo.
And Madam Chair, I would just want to say I agree with staff's findings for the record. I just wanted to thank them for bringing this back and putting those findings on the record to support and substantiate this motion today. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your comments. I agree with you completely. So we will bring it back now. Is Supervisor, we're asking, okay, great. I see no other hands, so we will bring it back for a roll call vote. Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Askew?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Adams.
Aye.
Thank you. And with that, that item is closed. And now I am happy to see Mr. Chulos at the mic, and we are now going to have a briefing and an update on COVID-19, including impacts, action proposals, and plans to address the current status. Thank you, Mr. Chulos, for being with us today.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. We have four items that we'd like to cover today in the COVID update. The first is a public health update by Dr. Moreno and Christie Michi, and I'll just go in order. The second is a rental assistance update by Lori Medina, our Social Services Director. And then the third and fourth items are an update on the alternate housing site status and the FEMA reimbursement update. Mr. Malley was scheduled to do that, but has a conflict, so Justin Lynn from the OES staff is going to be handling that item. So if the clerk could just make sure he has access into the meeting, that would be great. So perhaps we could start with Dr. Moreno. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chulos.
Good afternoon. I'm Chair, Board Members, Ed Moreno, Monterey County Health Officer and Director of Public Health. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you well. Thank you.
Great, great. Okay. So today, today's report will include information about California's plans to require COVID-19 vaccination for school entry, also information on Optum COVID-19 testing and test to treat, as well as update on over-the-counter rapid antigen testing expiration dates and masking requirements in public transportation setting. So to get started, California had intended to require that students in the seven to twelve grade span be vaccinated against COVID-19 to attend school in person. And the requirement was to take effect, I believe, initially, the semester following the FDA's approval for this entire age group. Subsequently, the state has announced that implementation of the requirement will be deferred. And according to the CDC, excuse me, CDPH website, to ensure sufficient time for successful implementation of new vaccine requirements, California will not initiate the regulatory process for COVID-19 vaccine requirement for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. And as such, any vaccine requirements would not take effect until after full FDA approval and no sooner than July first, two thousand twenty-three. So the date now is no sooner than July first, two thousand twenty-three. And CDPH and Monterey County Health Department still encourage all eligible Californians, including children, to be vaccinated against COVID-19. Moving on to Optum testing, Optum had previously offered only PCR testing at the sites here in Monterey County. However, there's been a growing preference by the public for quicker notification of COVID-19 results, which the rapid antigen testing does provide. There's also been a developing preference for COVID-19 rapid antigen testing over PCR in certain California Department of Public Guidance documents for the public and for employers. So subsequently, Optum will now offer COVID-19 antigen testing at all three Monterey County sites with the same data as results. Optum will still offer PCR testing for those that request it. Here, our Monterey County Health Department still recommends that the following groups of individuals get tested for COVID-19. That includes people with COVID-19 symptoms, people with exposure to COVID-19 before and after travel, and before and after attending large gatherings. Moving on to Optum test to treat. So the state is initiating a test to treat strategy to improve access to COVID-19 treatment. And according to California Department of Public Health, as of last week, test to treat refers to the following. One, identifying a person that has a positive COVID-19 test result. Two, checking to see if that person meets two, checking to see if that person meets criteria for COVID-19 treatment, which includes individuals at high risk for serious illness; three, consulting a physician, which may include a telehealth visit if appropriate; and four, providing a course of COVID-19 medication. So by the end of the month, the state has shared with us that they hope to offer test-to-treat at some Optum testing sites in California. However, our Health Department hasn't received, has not received any official notification as to whether our local Optum sites will be offering treatment. Our Health Department encourages county residents to consider the benefits of receiving treatment for COVID-19, which include a decreased length of COVID-19 illness, decreased severity of illness, decreased risk of hospitalization, and decreased risk of death among those that take and receive COVID-19 treatment. Moving on to treatment by healthcare providers. So as a reminder, healthcare providers already have the option to dispense COVID-19 medication, and some providers are currently providing their patients with COVID-19 medication. And that includes some local emergency departments, some urgent cares and primary care providers, which include your county health clinics. And if a, and if a provider, provider does not dispense COVID-19 medication, then that provider can still write a prescription, which patients can take to pharmacy that stocks the 19 prescription medication and fill their prescription. So if a county resident thinks that they might have COVID-19 and are at high risk for severe COVID-19 and would consider receiving treatment for COVID-19, then they should contact their healthcare provider. I'm going to move on now to over-the-counter COVID-19 rapid antigen test kit expiration dates. So certain rapid antigen over-the-counter test kits will be expiring soon. The California Department of Public Health issued a statement endorsing the emergency use of over-the-counter COVID-19 tests beyond their FDA-authorized expiration date. So according to California Department of Public Health, the emergency extension applies to all FDA-authorized over-the-counter COVID-19 tests. And in addition, when an individual reads the test result, the internal control line should be both easily visible and should be the color specified by the specific test instructions. And finally, as long as the test kit's internal control line is functioning properly, the state's blanket extension is valid until CDPH posts that the emergency extension has ended, and at that point, individuals should cease using test kits beyond their printed expiration dates. The emergency extension applies to all FDA-authorized over-the-counter COVID-19 tests here in California. And county residents who want to know if their test kit has expired should look for the expiration date printed on the test kit package. And finally, my last topic today is regarding mask requirements in public transportation settings. So on January 29th, 2021, the CDC issued an order that required face masks to be worn by all people while in public transportation, traveling into, within, or out the United States. And the order also required all people to wear masks while at transportation hubs, including both indoor and outdoor areas. But according to the CDC website, quote, "As a result of a court order, CDC's January 29th, 2021 order requiring masks on public transportation." CDC continues to recommend that people wear masks in indoor public transportation settings. Here in California, the California Department of Public Health website this morning still includes the state health officer order that requires that all individuals wear masks while on public transit and in transportation hubs, regardless of vaccinations that it says. And we at the Health Department are waiting further direction from California Department of Public Health, given the new statement by the CDC. And finally, here in Monterey County, our Health Department still recommends that residents use face coverings when in indoor public settings, including those individuals that are un-immunized or that have weakened immune systems. So that concludes public health COVID-19 report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We haven't had a report for a while, and your report was comprehensive and very helpful. Before I go to my colleagues, I had a question that I wanted to ask you, Dr. Moreno, and it goes to the test-to-treat portion. And I was wondering if there, if this is a time-sensitive thing. So example, someone has asthma, and they don't realize that they have COVID, and they take the test and they find that they do, but they may have had it for a week or so. Is it still effective to take the drug? I forget the name. It's Plexus something?
Yeah, Plexocoid is one of the test supervisor, treatments, excuse me supervisor. And it does depend on a few factors. One is when the, how long the patient has had symptoms, and particularly whether or not they meet criteria for being at risk of serious illness. So that information would be, or that determination would be made at the Optum testing site or in the event where a patient is actually being tested by a provider, a healthcare provider, like an urgent care or primary care provider who also provides the medication. That would be the decision of the healthcare provider in consultation with the patient, and they would make that decision at that time.
So one cannot test at home, determine you have COVID, and walk into the local Rite Aid and get the drug?
That is a good question, and that, that question and similar questions are being considered by the California Department of Public Health at this time.
Good. Thank you very much for that. Now let me bring it back to the board and see if there are any board member who has, board members who have questions at this point? None. Yes, Supervisor Askew?
Dr. Moreno, I know the county purchased a number of COVID tests so that we could have those available for our high-risk community groups. Do we have a status update on the number of those tests that are, remain available for distribution?
And Madam Chair, I might jump in there also. I neglected, and I'm sorry, I neglected to mention that Deborah Wilson from Contracts Purchasing, who has the supply, is also on the call and should have mentioned that she was going to speak after Dr. Moreno. So perhaps Dr. Moreno could answer the question, but I'm sure Ms. Wilson could. My apologies.
No, thank you, Nick. I was just going to say that I don't have that information, but hopefully one of the next speakers can, might have that information for you.
Thank you. Let me see if my other colleagues have questions for Dr. Moreno. Supervisor Lopez?
No additional questions here. Thank you.
Supervisor Leho?
No, none at this time. Thank you for the report, Dr. Moreno.
Thank you. And is there any member of the public who has a question for Dr. Moreno at this point? Not seeing anyone in chambers or on the phone, so thank you, and it's back to you, Mr. Chulos. And thanks very much, Dr. Moreno.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we could ask Deborah Wilson to give an update on the test kit supply and expiration dates and that sort of thing, as per Supervisor Askew's question. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board. We have 50,209 total tests. 22,904 of those are over-the-counter. 24,000 are CLIA waived, and 3,300 are CLIA certified.
Thank you for that information.
Thank you so much, Deborah. So that was 20,204 over-the-counter. And Deborah, can you just, for the members of the public to understand that the Board of Supervisors authorized funding to purchase those tests so that we could make sure that our groups who are at risk have access to those? And there is a public process by which community organizations can request a supply of those tests, as well as other PPE. Can you just briefly describe how members of the public or members of the community organizations, who is eligible to receive those tests and how they can make those requests?
Sure. Actually, Supervisor Askew, that would probably be something that Kristi Michie could answer or Dr. Moreno could answer in terms of who's qualified to ask for which test. Over-the-counter, the public can ask for those. So that's the school districts, that's anybody that's, you know, in the community. Of course, the CLIA waived are the tests that also school districts where the nurse is going to get waived to provide the test, and also for skilled nursing facilities and such, and any other type of clinic when they have breakouts. And of course, the CLIA certified are for hospitals and clinics only. And so we have a Mohawk. We have a process by which the community can request those tests. And either Deborah Hopkin, again, or Dr. Moreno or Kristi Michie could talk more about the specifics as far as the clinical part of that.
Okay, thank you. And I think I was mostly looking for the over-the-counter tests, just so that we can be really clear with the community about who's eligible, which populations we're looking to target to. And if an organization, I know we've been doing extensive outreach from our district office to try to make sure that all of the organizations who are serving children under the age of five, who haven't yet been able to be vaccinated, or are other vulnerable populations who may be, have lower rates of vaccination for other reasons, have access to those tests. But I do want to make sure that everyone who's paying attention knows how to put that request in and ensure that you're taking advantage of the resources that are available.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you Supervisor Askew. Mr. McKee, do you have comments?
Yeah, just to follow up on Supervisor Askew's questions, which I think are really appropriate at this point, which is to try to get test kits out to the, to as broadly as possible. We have, we have the kits available, excuse me. So I would encourage organizations to utilize the, the system that they have over there at Contracts Purchasing. I know, Deborah, you called it a Mohawk, but could you quickly explain, you know, what Mohawk means? And is there, is there a website or anything where people can, organizations especially can put in to seek the access to those test kits? Because we want to, we want to keep pushing them out if we have them available as broadly as possible.
And I think that Deborah Hopkin is a better person to answer that question for us. Deborah?
Sure, I'd be happy to speak to that. The Mohawk is a position established by the state who takes responsibility for coordinating medical resources in the event of an emergency such as the pandemic. So we do have an established website where people can submit a request. Probably the best bet would be to go to the EMS agency website. There's several links on our website that will take you directly to that form. You can fill that out, and your request will go to Contracts Purchasing, the Mohawk, and we work together to make sure those requests are fulfilled based on our inventory.
Could you tell us, please, what Mohawk actually stands for, what the words are?
Sure, sorry about that. I'm so used to using that acronym. It's Medical Health Operational Area Coordinator. So it's nice to have an acronym for it, for sure. But sure, it's a state-established position.
Thank you very much for that. I think it gets confusing. People think it's a haircut. Thank you. Are there any other questions for my colleagues, for Deborah at this point?
None here.
None here. And is there anyone, any member of the public who wishes to ask questions or make comments at this point? Seeing no one in chambers, and I'm not seeing anyone online. Okay, and I do see Ms. Medina is approaching the lectern.
Okay, good afternoon. Lori Medina, Department of Social Services. I'm here to give a brief update about the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. It's actually rent and utility assistance, but we, we use ERAP for acronyms.
So say what it means again.
Emergency Rental Assistance Program.
Thank you.
So we've had two rounds of this program over, from 2000 to 2022. And it's amounted to about $51 million in total. And then we also had about $900,000 that was reallocated to us of unspent funding from federal and state sources. I will tell you that we kind of got, had a slow start, starting, but we have really been expending this funding. Round two was supposed to go through 2025. We've already obligated all of our funding for both, we've already expended all of round one, and we've fully obligated all of our funding. We spent half of round two, and we fully obligated the rest. So we have more applications than we believe we're going to be able to fill. So I mean, that's kind of exciting, but it's also, it just tells you about the need since the program was supposed to actually sunset in 2025, and we're in 2022. And, you know, we're already getting close to running out of funding. The other thing I wanted to mention to you is that the board also authorized $150,000 for those families, some gap funding for families who wouldn't qualify for the federal and state program. And so we have actually been using that and kind of going through our waitlist, prioritizing families who are the most in need to try to serve as many people as we can. Let me just give you an idea of how many households we've served. So we've served for utility payments more than 3,371 household, unique households for utility payments, and almost 25, 2,500 households with rental utility assistance. So, you know, it's been quite a robust program that the community has actually been really utilizing. I'm available for any questions?
Supervisor Askew?
Yeah, I just, I think it's pretty incredible. Over $50 million in rental and utility assistance that's been distributed to Monterey County families and residences. I just want to, I think, give a shout out to the agencies who helped make that possible, who really sprung into action. I also want to acknowledge all of the renters who really, you know, maybe had never asked for assistance before, but found themselves in a situation because of the economic impact of COVID, where they were needing to come and ask for assistance. And the landlords, who have been so willing to work with the county and the government and these programs that they probably also have never had to engage with before. But I just, you mentioned the significance of the need. And for so many of us, you know, if we've been able to maintain employment during the course of these past two years, you know, I haven't worried about how I'm going to pay my mortgage. But for so many of my neighbors, I know that that's been a reality. And the reality that you just described, Lori, is that we will expend fully the funds available to us. And the, there are families who remain in very precarious situations because they don't have the resources to pay their rent or pay their back rent or pay their utilities. So I think the plea to the community is to acknowledge that significant dire need remains ever-present in our community and our collective responsibility as we move forward as a county with this budget season, as landlords who are renting, as neighbors who are looking to help our loved ones and our neighbors, that we all collectively need to continue to recognize that need and do everything in our power to support one another. So I just, thank you, and the need continues.
And thank you. And just wanted to also, you just kind of mentioned it or referenced it. Big shout out to our partner agencies who are helping to distribute this money. They've really been working hard to get the money out the door.
Thank you Supervisor Askew. So Lori, I've got the same situation, or same comment, I guess, that, that my colleague does. I'm hearing so much conversation in our community about people who are just making it because of the help of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program and because of the help from the utility program, because of the hugely high rent that we have in our area. And I'm wondering if we are preparing ourselves for what is, what may be following when that funding is no longer available and people are not able to make their rents? And if we have, if there is a plan B, so to speak?
Yeah, so I can answer that in two ways. I mean, yes, we do know that a lot of our partner agencies already have utility and rent assistance programs. It hasn't been as robust as this in the emergency. And so we are looking at what can go through those normal channels. But yeah, we're still going to have some gaps.
Thank you for that. And I see that we have, sorry, I'm having difficulty seeing. We have one participant who has the hand raised. I'm thinking it might be Supervisor Leho.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Lori. And first of all, I want to thank my colleagues in the Department of Social Services for wanting to do a localized program rather than opting into the state program, which we hear has, has significant delays in getting money out because they're dealing with it in a much larger basis. With our partners who have been very effective, we've been able to hone in on the local needs and be able to have trusted community organizations that are able to distribute this more quickly and also doing their due diligence to making sure there's people that truly should be benefiting from this. And I think we've, we've had a good balance there in making sure we're doing a little bit of verification, but also getting the money to those families who need it. And, and most recently, the legislature extended the eviction protection for unpaid rent only for those families who were, who applied to a rent assistance program but were still in the pipeline waiting to receive that benefit. So that they extended that protection to the end of June. So the question I have, Lori, there was some messaging that went out a few days ago that that pro- that that program, the rent assistance program, was ending on April 14th, I believe. Could we just get clarity whether is that program ending? Is there a continuation? And then to answer Mary Adams's question, I would add a third prong to that in that I think we have a great message to tell the state that there weren't significant unused funds, that Monterey County got the money out, partnered with community organizations to do that. But we're in a position to now advocate that the state should perhaps in the June budget consider another extension of rental assistance as well. So I think we're in a good position to advocate because we don't have that problem of unspent funds. We've actually done a good job in getting the money out. But but Laura, if you could just clarify, what was that April 14th deadline that was announced a few days ago?
Yes, thank you, Supervisor. So we did send out a communication or United Way did because we've had to stop accepting applications. We already have more applications than we can fulfill. So we are clearing those applications. There's already a waitlist. And so we had to kind of stop taking the applications. Now, it would be wonderful if more funding was reauthorized.
So we put a stop to it until or if the state were to provide another round of funds, then we could reopen the program.
Correct, correct.
Got it. All right, well, thank you. Good work done. And I know, as Supervisor Askew pointed out, we really were able to help a lot of people by getting those millions of dollars out to the people who really needed it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lori. I absolutely agree with with our comments. Let me just see if there's any member of the public who wishes to make comment on this item. I'm not seeing anyone in chambers, nor am I seeing anyone online. And do you see anyone else? Okay, thank you for that. Thank you so much for your presentation, Ms. Medina.
Madam Chair, the last two parts of our presentation today are going to be handled by Justin Lin from OES. And one is a brief update on the alternative housing site situation. And the other is an update on the FEMA reimbursement process. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. This is Justin Lin from the Office of Emergency Services. I'm an emergency services planner. Thank you, Supervisors and members of the public. For the alternate housing census, there are currently four individuals. It's one family occupying a trailer and none of the hotels are currently being used. For FEMA reimbursements, there's no substantial change since the last board report. And the counties received approximately $3.7 million in reimbursement, roughly $4.5 million of projects in final FEMA review before being obligated and has 20 projects totaling about 21 million that are in various stages of FEMA approval. All of the money that will be received is being tracked to return to the originating fund. So, for example, the cannabis tax or the general fund. Are there any questions?
Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions. None from the DAS, none from Supervisor Lopez or Alejo. Is there any member of the public who wishes to ask questions about this information? Not seeing anything online or anyone. Thank you very much, Justin. I appreciate your comments. And it looks like we have no questions for you at this point.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, that concludes our brief COVID update for today. Thank you.
Thank you so much for organizing it. It was very well presented and very well received. Okay, we will continue on now and we will go to item 42, which is a public hearing to consider accepting the 2021 annual report pursuant to the Monterey County Condition of Approval and Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting and to consider amending the Condition of Approval and Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program to all electronic records management. And I believe that we have Mary Israel, who's going to be doing the presentation for us today.
Good morning, good afternoon. I'm trying to get access so that I can share my PowerPoint. Great. Okay. Great, thank you.
There we go. Perfect. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your patience and good afternoon again. Chair Chair Adams, Board of Supervisors, other members of the DAS. I'm Mary Israel. I'm Senior Planner with Housing and Community Development and I'm presenting the 2021 Mitigation Monitoring Annual Report and then a proposed amendment to the Condition of Approval Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program, of which the annual report is one part. The purpose of the annual report is to capture a point in time as a representation of compliance status for permitted development projects mitigations. The annual report brings the ongoing mitigation monitoring into the public eye and provides an opportunity for discussion. Staff continues to actively monitor conditions and mitigations throughout the year. The purpose of the 2022 program amendment is to remove requirements to print condition compliance forms every time they are made in a cellar to retain hard copy records and by doing so, bring it into alignment with the current HCD or Housing Community Development Records Retention Policies. A quick background on the program. The board adopted the Condition of Approval Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program, which I will call the program from here on in 2001 with Resolution 1391 as a result of the Leaper Settlement Agreement. Annual report regulations came out of the settlement agreement and the annual report required component were revised several times, most recently in 2019. The program applies to projects with conditions of approval and mitigation measures. Projects without mitigation measures are exempted from the program, but are kept in compliance in the same manner. So a quick background on SEQA. The California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, gives us the framework to reduce the significant environmental impacts of land use projects when it is feasible to do so. So lead agencies like the county identify feasible measures or changes to projects to mitigate those impacts. The measures are the result of a mitigated negative declaration, which I'll call an MND, or an environmental impact report, which I'll call an EIR. County has each permit holder on a project requiring mitigations agree to implement them by signing a mitigation and monitoring reporting plan specific to that project. They are then on the hook, so to speak, to implement the mitigations and submit monitoring as required. SEQA also requires that lead agencies ensure implementation. So the program that I'm discussing today is our toolbox for ensuring implementation. Okay. Here's a simple breakdown of what is included in every annual report per Section 3E of the program. For all projects that are subject to the program in the calendar year and the selected older projects as applicable, you will find a summary chart of the listed projects and the status of condition compliance for each project, the responsible department's annual reports that certify their compliance with the program. And for clarification, a responsible department is a department that prepares monitors or reports on compliance with mitigation measures. So those reports are independent and they are due to the chief of planning by the end of January of the next calendar year. The report also includes staff training participant lists that document the attendance to the mandatory staff program trainings during the subject calendar year. So altogether, this is what the program requires to be included in the report every year. This year's report has 32 total projects in this 2021 annual report. The county approved 30 land use projects in 2021 that have mitigation measures and they are listed by type of SEQA document there. Two older projects mitigation conditioning, I'm sorry, mitigation monitoring conditions were selected for reporting and they are Pasadena's Condition 155 and Kenyatta Woods North's Condition 153. Both of these are ongoing annual water usage monitoring reports that the CAPS, which is the Condition of Approval Program Supervisor, CAPS. And that's me this year. And the county council selected pursuant to program criteria. So I just wanted to point out that this list of one certified EIR, one addendum 12 and the other numbers don't match what's in the annual report due to a typographical error. And so I apologize. And I was hoping that we could, through the motion that is made here, allow staff to make minor edits to more accurately represent last year's productivity as shown on this slide as part of the motion to approve. So with the assistance of now retired Assistant County Council Wendy Strmling, HCD Planning trained all responsible department staffs in staff in Zoom meetings on August 12th and 26th and also trained all the new planners on March 23rd in a large group training via Zoom. And then in ongoing one-on-one trainings between condition compliance staff and the planners as requested. So that graphic is not intended to be read. It's just a representation of the many people that attended our Zoom training. So moving on to the second resolution that is attached to this staff report. I'll briefly review Part 2, which relates to the Resolution Attachment C, a proposed amendment to the program. As introduced earlier, the program provides the procedures for monitoring tracking of COA MM, Conditions of Approval Mitigation Measures, required by the county. Some of the procedures in the program are to print out hard copy condition compliance forms for every COA or MM at every change of status until the condition is met. Others are to retain all hard copy records. On March 1st, 2022, the Board of Supervisors approved a revision to the records retention schedule for HCD planning, which effectively shifted HCD record management from hard copy and electronic file retention to an all electronic file system. So with REZO number 22041, which I hope you recall, this change has multiple benefits, including procedurally and environmentally. HCD suggests the same changes be made for condition compliance monitoring and reporting purposes. This will reduce the amount of printing and simplify record keeping. We feel this is an important step to take now so that the records management across HCD is aligned. Currently, the program document, which is Exhibit A to the program resolution, requires that changes to the administration of the program be made by a board decision in a publicly noticed hearing. Therefore, as the CAPS, I prepared a draft of a resolution to update the program text in Exhibit A, Sections 2, Implementation Responsibilities, and Section 3, Procedures. The recommended edits are specified in the discussion section of the staff report and are shown in Attachment D as red line. This slide basically discusses them, that we would move to all electronic records management. And there are also some minor edits having to do with updating the naming from RMA to HCD and some minor changes about procedures. It is staff's recommendation that the board adopt a resolution to accept the 2021 annual report on the status of mitigation monitoring with minor revisions in Page 1 to correct the numbers of types of SEQA documents as shown on Slide 5 of this presentation. It is also staff's recommendation that the board adopt a resolution to amend the Condition of Approval Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program to all electronic records management and update the terminology in it to reflect our current department name and to other errata edits. So I'm available for questions.
Thank you for that, the report. Let me see if I have any questions from any of my colleagues. Not seeing any in chambers and I'm not seeing anyone's hand raised.
Move to approve.
Thank you very much. And is there a second to that?
Lopez, seconds?
Thank you very much. And we'll take it out to the public to see if there's any member of the public who wishes to ask questions or make comments on this. I'm seeing no one coming forward, nor do I see anyone online. But I really want to thank you very much for your the time and effort in preparing this report. And I know while it seems tedious, it is absolutely needed to help ensure that there is follow through on the conditions of approval and mitigation measures. It's something that we not just should do, it's something that we have to do. So you're making it much easier by having it go through an all electronic process, which I think will really be cost effective and really helpful to to people. So I thank you for all of that. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Was there any other amended language that we needed to add in to? You had made a comment about wanting to change the numbers that you had on one of the slides. I don't know if that's something you want to add in now?
In the actual report, unfortunately, even with our diligent many layers of editors, we missed that the paragraph that immediately follows the 2021 annual report summary. We just had some old numbers on the it says three certified EIRs. As the addenda, there was only one. It has the incorrect totals for the types of SEQA documents that were adopted. So I was hoping that we could add to this. Let me share the screen again.
And I'll try to accept it from the amendment to include these updated numbers that were just explained, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much.
Second stand.
As shown.
Yes.
There we go.
That's included in the motion. Thank you.
So I think we can just make those changes whenever it's possible.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion. We have a second. We've had a great presentation. Could we have a roll call vote, please? Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Askew?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
Thank you so much, Mary, for the great report.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, and let's see. Moving forward now, we are going to other board matters. And we'll start with our county administrative officer and his comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I'd like to wish a happy birthday and absentia to Supervisor Phillips, formerly known as Judge Phillips, hoping he's enjoying it wherever he is. We won't disclose his location. And on a less happy note, last week, as everybody knows, there was a significant fire here in the city of Salinas with the Taylor Farms Processing Building in Salinas off of Schilling, near the county Schilling Place Building. Obviously, there's huge impacts from from that fire. I want to thank all the firefighters and the first responders who helped helped with that, the immediate needs that were there. There are also some county operations helping out with that, environmental health in particular. It's obviously very significant for our county, especially to have such a prominent company face that that kind of impact. We, everybody here knows Bruce Taylor and the amazing businessman that he is. And so we would expect that he will be coming forward pretty quickly and trying to get that facility back up and running. It's been pretty clear that he's jumped on the needs of the workers and the agriculture community to try to to and his customers to try to move that work and those processing to other other facilities, especially what they're doing currently down in Yuma, Arizona. But it's certainly no replacement for having the the processing here in Salinas and Salinas Valley. We know that's significantly important. The county resources and response that can be available. I know that it's obviously a city of Salinas property and the city of Salinas is going to do what they can to help Taylor Farms get back up and running there locally. The county is also ready and able to assist where we can. We've sent those messages out both to Mr. Taylor and to his organization. And we'll be meeting with him in the near future when he's ready to do so. He knows that we're available and we've sent out, we've had some good responses from him. We've had some internal meetings already with some of the key players that might have that might be able to help here in in the county to help both with the business side of things as well as the worker side of things. We know there's impacts on the on the farm workers who work in the industry, not only directly for Taylor, but for those that process through Taylor. And we want to make sure that they're taken care of. that they're taken care of the best we can. There might be needs to work through the unemployment process if that should should come, but we we understand that Mr. Taylor and other producers are trying to to limit that to zero if possible, but if not possible, we will certainly be there to to help with any resources that we might have in that in that regard. Environmental health was there on the day, as I said, but there'll also be critical moving forward to try to help with both the aftermath as well as any rebuilding, and we certainly appreciate the work that Rick and Accarcion and his team do over in environmental health. Chris Donnelly at the Workforce Development Board has also been helpful in trying to to make sure that there are resources. Richard Vaughn with our Economic Development, as our Economic Development Manager is ready to help out wherever he can. And and if there's a role for other resources in the county, we're ready to assist, whether it's our Housing Department, Housing Community Development Department, I know it's not in their jurisdiction or Public Works facilities, they're they're all neighbors right there of Taylor Farms, so they're they're available to do so also. So just finally, just wanted to extend our condolences to Mr. Taylor for the loss of that building, as well as the impact, and condolences to any of the workers that might be impacted, and know that there are resources here if you should need them.
Thank you very much for your remarks, I appreciate that. Now, would you be doing new referrals?
Yes. Yes, Madam Chair, we also have new referrals, the next item up. We have two new referrals this week, one from Supervisor Lopez, which is to address some issues in the the community of Spreckles. As we know, it's a, in the referrals noted in the referral, that's a, you know, small town that's kind of lodged between agriculture, the city of Salinas, and Highway sixty-eight, and there's some issues in using of Harkins Road, which is, you know, seems to be a major thoroughfare for people trying to cross through from from sixty-eight through the ag fields over towards over towards Abbott and Schilling area. And so Supervisor Lopez wants to explore whether we can make Harkins Road into a one-way street to see if that would be beneficial to the impact to the elementary school and the community of Spreckles. We know it's a close-knit community, and whatever we can do to help them have a nice small-town feel and keep that small-town feel, we would look forward to helping out with that, and we will happy to refer this over to our Public Works team. The other referral today is from Supervisor Salina, sorry, Supervisor Alejo regarding working with the city of Salinas and the Salinas Regional Sports Authority and the Department of Fish and Game at the state to address some of the homeless encampment issues that are along Gavillon Creek near the Salinas Regional Sports Complex. There are some, obviously, human concerns there, you know, human human relations concerns there, as well as environmental concerns and nuisance concerns, both for those who are experiencing homelessness, as well as those who are trying to 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 have businesses or recreate in that area. And the impact on Gavillon Creek can also be environmentally significant, which could also pose liability for the owners of the creek, which is the city of Salinas and the county of Monterey. And it's been an issue that's gone on over and over for several years where the, there are homeless encampments there, they've they've moved and then come back and moved and come back, and so we'd be happy to collaborate with the city of Salinas and the Sports Authority, as well as the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to to try to address that situation.
Thank you, Mr. McKee. And let me just see if there, I see Supervisor Lejo's hand is up.
I just want to speak briefly on the referral on Gavillon Creek, only because it's a different situation today because the Lieutenant of the Fish and Wildlife Department sent a letter, you know, talking about potential liability and environmental concerns to water and wildlife by allowing things to continue there. So it's kind of an elevated issue here for us, and I think when we entered that agreement on the on the sports complex, I don't think we contemplated, you know, passing on any full responsibility to just the city and the nonprofit organization, but I think we have some responsibility, and there's some smaller actions that we can take. For example, all the vehicles that are parking on that levee where it was never intended to have multiple vehicles on there. Sometimes I witnessed one, you know, doing motor work on the vehicle. I think by simply closing off those entrances for vehicles, that's a really simple solution, at least with by not having the vehicles in that area, but there's more difficult ones, and I think that's where the county collaborating with the city and the Salinas Regional Sports Authority, I think we could we could come up with some some better solutions, bringing in our expertise of our staff and our resources to then just come back and have us collaborate with the city and the Sports Authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments on the CEO's remarks?
Madam Chair, if I could, it's my comments would be on my referral on the Spreckles issue, just wanted to briefly share. It's not our first line of defense, this is after about nine years of working with the community. The king can, the key concern is not regular traffic, it's the eighteen-wheelers who have currently, I believe, five or six signs as they come from Salinas towards Spreckles stating that no eighteen-wheelers are allowed, but we often hear, ah, but the navigation system says that this is the way I should go. And once they realize and they see the signs, for some reason, they choose to pick up speed to get through it faster, and it runs right, and the first building they pass as they come into Spreckles is the elementary school. And at those speeds, and then eighteen-wheeler, those buildings shake. And so obviously, we're trying to prevent any future issues, especially truck versus pedestrians or traffic or worse in that particular part of the area of Spreckles as you come in on Harkins. And so this is our kind of last-ditch effort after almost a decade of work to try to slow down and get people to turn around in those large trucks. So just appreciate staff's willingness to give this a look and see if there isn't some solution we can come up with to make sure that the community feels safe, given these challenges that they've been bearing for an extended period of time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Lopez. So thank you. Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on our county administrative officer's comments? Doesn't sound like anyone is, so woo-hoo for that. And now we will go to board comments, and we will go in reverse order, and I will start with Supervisor Root Askew.
Thank you. So I just have a handful of thank-yous today. I want to start with thinking AMR, our ambulance provider, they hosted me for a ride-along last week, and it was just an incredible opportunity to spend some time with our dedicated paramedic team, learning about what they do, just, you know, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't, I was a little nervous to to hang out with AMR, I'm worried about what we might experience and see, but it was a really phenomenal experience, and I really enjoyed it, I want to thank AMR. I also was honored to spend a little time with Dr. Max Cuevas, taking a tour of some of the Clinica de Salud clinic sites. It was really great to see some of the extensive services that they provide residents in our community who rely on medical for their health insurance. Met with, I wanted to thank our team from Salinas yesterday, who met with the Salinas MOU Ad-Hoc Committee, Supervisor Alejo and I, to take a tour of some of the key locations within the Al-Sal Vibrancy Plan, looking at how the county and city may be able to continue working together on some of those visions that the community outlined in the vibrancy plan. I want to thank Melissa over at the Food Bank for Monterey County, she hosted me for a tour. I got busy when we didn't have a board meeting, so I instead went out into community. I want to acknowledge and thank all the folks who made the walk and roll events at MPUSD possible, that was our Safe Route to School program was active last week, early mornings, meeting with kids and getting parents out to walk and walk and bike to school. And then I also want to thank Digital Nest for hosting my team for our first in-person town hall meeting that we've had since I've been in office last, I think it was last Wednesday, with a great conversation, talking about just sort of what the Board of Supervisors does, some of the county responsibilities, and really appreciate everyone who took the time to come out and join us last week for that town hall event. So thank you all for hosting me, and I really, really love the chance to be out in community more so this year than last year, and I learned so much every conversation that I have, so I'll look forward to, I've got a couple more tours scheduled, and I look forward to to meeting the rest of many more folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Askew. Supervisor Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just a couple quick notes here today. The first is a note of appreciation to the Lions Clubs of King City and Solidad, as well as the Public Recreation Department in Grerefield, who all put on amazing Easter egg hunts in the community. Some all over social media, got to stop by a couple of them, and it was entertaining. And so just want to thank them for bringing that awesome opportunity to our kids. And then I want to congratulate Rene Mendez of the City of Gonzalez, as sad as it is, we learned that he has taken a new job in the city of Watsonville as their city manager, and we know that it's a well-deserved growth opportunity for him, but at the same time, it's hard for us to let him go when he's had such a transformational effect on the community of Gonzalez, along with their leadership team, and so want to congratulate him on that new position. And I know that he'll do amazing things up in Watsonville, but it, he will definitely be missed here in South County, and wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate him on that move. And lastly, just really want to continue to thank staff for for all the work that they're doing to keep the public informed of some of the changes that we're seeing throughout the community. I know we're we're seeing some major opportunities coming down from the state level in funding, and I've seen a lot of that turn into construction, specifically down on the 101 corridor, and that construction is having an impact on folks' ability to navigate, especially right now in King City with nighttime closures being a hundred percent on the bridge into King City. And so just thankful for that continued communication because it is critical. And then my final point, just to echo Charles's comments, obviously, the facility that burned down in Salinas last week, part of Taylor Farms' major operations, is a major loss to the community, but I want to be the first to say thank you to every one of the firefighters who made sure that they did what they could to make sure that not a single life was threatened hurt in that process. We know that there was no major injuries, and we have to be thankful for that first. But I also want to thank C.A.O. McKee for reaching out, obviously, that's in the third district, and he reached out immediately to see what we could do in terms of a quick response from the county to make sure that folks knew that resources were available, supportive, and wrapped around. And so we're hearing those products in his report earlier today of what has come out of those conversations, and so appreciative of his leadership in making sure that from bottom to top, we're thinking about those impacts throughout our communities. And with that, I wrap my comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Lopez. Supervisor Alejo?
Madam Chair, I want to echo that. I mean, we really avoided a big disaster here because of the quick work of our firefighters and the many other first responders, oh yes, and the communications that went out. Thirty-five thousand pounds of ammonia would have really created a toxic plume that would have flown down the Salinas Valley into all those communities. Even though the alerts went out, I drove down the 101, and there were still work crews out there. So it's, a disaster was avoided. I think there's some lessons to be learned there, just in our OES alert system. I got the phone calls that came in, the Spanish mechanized translation wasn't up to par, that could be improved. And then for workers, and I got some contacts in the school districts that said if OES had sent out some multilingual links that they could even send it out in through their school systems, because it was, the kids were set to go to school the next morning, that they had to just let everyone know that school was canceled, but there were still people, parents going to work in agriculture. And for example, I think with the Spanish not being up to par, that's where just subsequent texts could go out with links of instructions in Spanish, and then in some of the indigenous languages like Mesteco and Sapotec, that that people could just link, click on, and it could take them to a link with an audio explanation about that warning. So there are just some small things that really go a long way when there's a lot of confusion, because I think our community had experienced something like this for quite some time. So I hope we learn from that and that we could improve our alert system in multiple languages. So but thank you, thank you to all our team for the great work done and a disaster avoided. And so I also want to just thank the partnership, with ongoing partnership with the city of Salinas, we were out with some county staff and Supervisor Askew and Councilmember Orlando Soriano yesterday, and he's Salinas, just looking to see where we could perhaps collaborate on the Al-Sal Vibrancy Plan, so I look that, I look forward to that coming back to the full board for more discussion. We're kind of finishing a little bit earlier than expected here, so I know I'm going to the CSAC, the county's Association Legislative Conference in Sacramento, where I'll be till Friday, so look forward to representing Monterey County there at that conference. Some key issues still to be discussed at the state level, including care court and broadband, among other issues. On the last two notes, I would just also congratulate Rene Mendez, Supervisor Lopez, and he has expressed, he has done tremendous work in the city of Gonzalez, but I know he will not go to my hometown and do some great work there. We had some, not not some stable leadership, a few city managers had come and gone over the last three or four years, and I hope Rene brings some stability and bring some of his best practices in local government for the city of Watsonville. And last thing I want to just, I know he's not here today because he's out of town, but I wanted to express a happy birthday to Supervisor John Phillips, and I hope that he's enjoying himself a little bit on his birthday week. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. I have a few comments I want to make as well, and in addition to thanking all of the the firefighters and the first responders to the to the Taylor Farms Fire, I want to thank Bruce Taylor personally. I believe that his calm and reassuring demeanor in the face of personal and professional disaster really did a lot to keep our community calm and moving forward. I think Mr. Taylor carries so much of our community in so many different ways, and I I want everyone to know how much that we, as a county, completely trust and appreciate the work that that he does and his approach to this. So we're here for you in whatever way you need us. I hope everyone who observes holidays had a good Easter or Passover or Ramadan, and to everyone else, I hope that you're enjoying the onset of spring. We added just a little sprinkle of rain this morning, which is just enough to perk everything up. Next week, I'm looking forward to attending an event with the National Wildland Fire Leadership Council to learn about a revolutionary high-volume water delivery and water storage service for wildland fire prevention and suppression. The demonstration is going to be held at the El Sur Ranch in Big Sur on April twenty-seventh, and if you're interested in attending this, please contact my office for more information. That same day, April twenty-seventh, the Big Sur Byway Organization is going to be holding its quarterly meeting. Again, please contact my office if you would like to attend that meeting. There's currently a federal funding opportunity for national scenic byways like Big Sur, and we're working with the Housing Community Development Department and the Byway Organization members to pursue this funding opportunity with the Caltrans Byway Program. So while we have lots to be thankful for, there still is a lot of work ahead. The final thank you that I want to give before we move to closeout, I want to give a thank you to Kelly Downland, County Counsel, who did an excellent job for us here today. It's the first time we've ended before three o'clock in a long time.
Thank you, Chair, I appreciate that very much.
And if now, if we could please get a readout from closed session of both the Monterey County Board of Supervisors and the Monterey County Board of Supervisors of the Monterey County Water Resources Agency.
Yes, to start for the Monterey County Board of Supervisors, I do have a reportable action today. The Board approved a side letter with Unit J concerning on-call pay, and for the Board of Supervisors of the Monterey County Water Resources Agency, I don't have any reportable items for today.
Thank you, County Counsel, and with that, we will be consider ourselves adjourned. Thank you all so much.